We're gonna call the meeting to order and have a roll call, which we've signed a sheet. No problem there. I need a motion to approve the agenda and the minutes.
Well, you don't have the minutes. You'll do minutes.
Okay, let's approve the agenda.
It's moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, that's all we need to do there. Approval of the minutes.
Is Tiffany coming? No?
You don't have the session minutes.
I have a question about how to fill out this, but she can.
We don't have minutes from the last meeting that we had?
What? He said we're having closed session, so I got all these.
Okay. We have no comments from the floor, right?
Not that I know of.
We have to do that in a closed session, right? Is that what you just said? Yeah.
Notification review. Water, John, write on us.
All right.
Now, we're starting on page, I don't know.
Well, it's...
It's, uh, chapter fifty.
Fifty-three, fifty-three.
Wow.
Yeah, but there's nothing.
Chapter fifty and number three.
Right, right, yeah.
Fifty-three.
Yep.
Let's, let's just take a minute and fifty was nothing but talking about waterworks and sanitation and all that. And extensions and all that. Fifty-one was garbage and recycling. Um, I had a question on that. Do we still pay two bucks a month?
We have, we've been out of that for-
So we need to change that.
We've been out of that for a long time.
I thought we had.
Yep, yep. We phased out of that. Now if they wanted, they're on their own.
And we had a recycling program in South Jacksonville. Out there were A and W B here, F and S and whatever, but...
Then we got rid of the, the trailer. We got rid of it and then we went to they would do it curbside and we paid four dollars. We paid half of it and the resident paid the other half. And then the next year, we, we just kept dropping it off and phased it out until they paid it off.
So they, they still have it?
That's still available through Buster's or Area.
They do it all, so?
Yes. Yep.
No problem there. Fifty-two, the only thing we had there was where we had the aggregation for electrical and jointed. Fifty-three, that you can come.
All right. Um, Harry had asked us to go through these and read the ones pertaining to us, so I've just got some notes here. And the only thing I see on this, fifty-three point zero zero two is connections to water line to Oxville, which that needs to be out now. This was, um, at one point EPA wouldn't allow us to have any more hookups because we were on those wells. So about, now that we're on the new wells and have been for the fifteen years, we can hook up. Anybody can hook up again. So that needs to be out.
Okay. And that was talking about if somebody wanted to connect.
Yes.
Okay. All right, no problem.
Um, on page twelve, I saw no issues. Page thirteen, no issue.
I have one on fifteen. Um... We go back to Linda Beely and the other house next to her in the other one, I think. None of them have city water.
No.
Village water, because it's all available.
There's, there's a couple in there that do have.
Okay.
They have no sewer.
No sewer.
There's, there's no sewer down there. So they-
I'm just, I'm just telling you guys.
All, the houses he's talking about from Orlando, on Greenwood, from Orlando West to Lincoln.
On the north side.
There is no sewer. There's no sewer. Um, about, I don't know, don't pull me for sure, but about every other house, every second house has, has our water. But that's it. But not all of them even have water. So some of them well, they're all separate.
Well, it's been forever.
Yeah, 'cause there is no sewer main down there.
Do we have anything about, um, she being Linda Beely likes to quote, "She's grandfathered in." What does that refer to?
The only thing I can guess would be, um, because of the water, she's on her well. Because it stipulates in our ordinance that if a city, the city utilities within two hundred feet of your house, you have to hook up to it.
Okay.
Well, at that point, there was no main down there either. So they're, they're kind of grandfathered in with the horses and the animals. She's grandfathered in. But if that ever goes away, the next person can't do it.
Okay.
Um, now as far as sewer though-
Where does the water line end?
It, it doesn't. It goes all the way down, looks back around Lincoln, back to, um, uh, prairie land, across prairie land, back in.
So there is-
Water there now and has been for years.
Okay.
But no sewer. It never will be because you can't, you can't hook up to it. It's too low. There's no flow. So...
But her, her definition of grandfathered-
Yes.
With the animals.
Right.
Well, and it kind of applies, I mean, my experience with her has been it applies in any situation. If anyone comments, she'll say, "I'm grandfathered in."
You're exactly right.
Okay, okay. I just wasn't sure what actually that referred to.
She is right to, to a degree. As far as the animals, she can do that where you couldn't do it, I couldn't do it at my house.
Right.
But because at one point that wasn't in the village and she did that and she's still there, it's grandfathered.
Okay. And so the water might be another-
Same thing.
Okay.
'Cause there's a, there's, I don't know how many houses down through there. Eight or nine and probably four or five of them are on wells.
But as far as, um, cleaning up for residents, that, there's no grandfathering in there?
No, and that's gonna happen with the new girl-
Okay.
In the position. That's gonna happen this summer.
Just checking.
Yeah.
Now, about this, I think it was this section, when we were talking about the house that, uh, had their own water tap that connected to the house next to them and all of that ridiculousness and the one on the corner is like, "I don't want water. I'm just not gonna hook up to anything."
It's over here on, well, on that end.
Yeah, and we were kind of talking about like, if they would be compelled to hook up to water, uh, or not. And I knew we were talking about, we would talk about here. So we talked about it at one point and I didn't know if there was anything different, new or-
We can't make them hook up to our water, the ones that wanna disconnect it and didn't wanna pay it. But they're never gonna have water until they do because they can't have a well over there.
Right.
And they don't have a well. He just is using the house for storage.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why he thought he was gonna-
Well, the other, you just said that if a house, if there was a utility within two hundred feet, they had to connect.
They, they can't, they can't, they can't say, "I'm not gonna hook up, but I'm gonna dig a well."
Oh.
That they can't do. We can't force them to hook up, but they can't say, "I'm just gonna dig a well" 'cause-
I got you.
If you're within the two hundred feet, it's either-
Okay.
Hook up or you don't have it.
And they can't run a water line from an existing water line.
Right, from the house next to them.
You know, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah. The way it was.
Right to the main.
Right, okay. I just wanted to-
Clarify, sure.
Yeah.
Yep, no problem.
Okay, we're on page fifteen. We'll do that.
Okay, fifteen, and there again, um, everything in here is still good and, and needs to stay.
Okay, sixteen. The question I had was down at fifty-three oh two five, and they're talking about everything being made out of K copper lines?
No, but this supersedes, 'cause somewhere in here it should say, um, of the-
We're doing it here somewhere.
Right, okay, okay. From the lower side of the curb stop, permissioned and served shall be material approved and outlined by Illinois Plumbing Code. So we changed that to that because it roll, if, if the plumbing code changes, uh, in two years and they come up with some new great-
Right.
Material, we don't have to change this 'cause it says of the latest plumbing code. So as it changes, ours changes automatically with it.
Okay, so they do not have to be made out of A copper?
It does, no. So you can, we can take A out.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
That was a good catch, 'cause I missed that. 'Cause I saw down here where we had changed it the other. And if you remember, I think you were on, the first time he was on the board, we did that because K copper was getting so expensive.
Yes, you couldn't fit it.
And rather than just to say, "Okay, blue CTS poly, uh, this, this, and this," let's make it rolling. If, that way if the state code changes, ours changes automatically to whatever that is. So...
Now, if you go to fifty-three oh twenty-eight, which is on the next one, this is where we start talking about a curb stop and box shall be placed on every service pipe. Okay, so in the event somebody wants to hook on, they have to have their own curb stop, which is the stop box, I guess.
Right, right. That way, that allows us to shut it off-
Yeah.
For non-payment.
Right.
But it also protects you as a homeowner, 'cause if you have an issue and your inside valve's bad, you've got, we can come out and shut it off for you. So...
And if you go to the next one, you got fifty-three oh twenty-nine. I know there's a deal up here, right up the street, where there's one water line going, I think, now in the three apartments, and you can't shut the water line off. Those two-
You can shut it off, but it shuts the whole complex down.
Okay.
Now, that's different because that's different when it's a, when it's a rental unit. Um, it's, it's a little different.
Right.
You and I living next to each other can't say, "Hey, let's pay to have one line come in. Well, why often?" We only have one tap. That's what you can't do.
Right.
But if it's under, you know, if it's, it's apartment houses, that's a little different.
And we also, somebody put this in a long time ago, existing apartment houses shall be considered as one premise. So that covered them on that, where we can't go in there and force them into having three separate stop boxes and three separate lines and stuff like that. So...
Yep.
Just kind of explaining this for you guys, 'cause the kids, somebody gonna jump you somewhere.
Sure.
They got little parents, you know, that's why.
Again, that comes down to being grandfathered.
Huh?
Yeah, I don't either.
That's grandfathered, okay.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's not good of me. Yeah, if somebody comes to me and just like jumps on me about something I don't know, I'll be like, "Hey, man, I don't know. I don't have a problem saying that. Like, I'll get back to you."
Well, that's better than acting like you do know.
You know that's right.
Um, eighteen, nineteen, I see nothing on either one of them. I don't know, Dick, if you do.
Oh, I do, no problem.
Um, twenty, I have nothing. Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, the only thing I had there was under two at the bottom on the graph.
Uh-huh.
That's not right, is the rates. The rates have been increased.
Yeah, the rates have been increased, right. But that kind of, there again, this is kind of one of those that roll as our rates change. That automatically, we don't have to change the ordinance every time. That's why-
The only thing I think that, I think we ought to do away with is rates. Publishing of the rates here, or reading the references to them. Because you'll have somebody come in and say, "I'm sorry, dirt and blood."
Yeah, um, two needs to stay because usually it's in excess of two thousand gallons per month will be charged at the volume rate. And we can stay, instead of, um, charge at the volume rate, we can put that as charge at the, um, current rates. That way it'll always change.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So if we change that to current and then take out the, the chart, that'll roll as-
Is the whole thing, is they're gonna put this on yet?
Right. So as our rates change, the, it'd be whatever the current is.
Okay, that's what.
So we just need to X that.
John?
Yes, sir.
If I can add a rep?
Sure.
Did I read somewhere where the village has a minimum water and sewer bill for it?
Yes, yeah, fifty thirty-six. That gives you-
Fifty dollars and thirty-six?
Yep, and that gives you two thousand gallons of water.
Okay.
And your sewer. And then anything over two thousand is so much per gallon.
Yeah.
And then you match that with your sewer.
Well, I never, I never-
Like, like if you were, if you were-
I'm always over that, so I just read it somewhere.
Yeah, if, if, um, if a single person that uses fifteen hundred gallons of water, they're still gonna pay fifty thirty-seven.
That's one of those, it is what it is.
I always think that way.
Oh, there's always been a minimum.
All right.
Yeah, there's always been a minimum. I mean, that minimum has gone up, but there's always, the minimum always is for two thousand gallons, so that hasn't changed. It's just what the price was, has changed.
So you're gonna pay six thousand gallons whether you use it-
Regardless, that's right. It's kind of like Ameren. You have a minimum bill if you turn the tap or not, so... All right, uh-
So we're taking the chart out on twenty-two?
Yes, yep.
On the next page, twenty-two?
Yeah, yes, yeah. And put current instead of-
Because that one's water only and this one was water and sewer.
Yeah, we'll take both of those out.
Okay.
Both the charts will come out. Uh, page twenty-two, we need to change, um, C, fifty-three point zero eight six C. Um, that needs to go to forty-five days. That says, "Charges for such services are not paid within thirty days of delay," well, we're forty-five is what we are. So we need to change that.
Okay, let's stop there a minute. Where are we at as far as how many water meters you got out there? How many more we gotta get? How many more you gotta do?
Oh, to have the whole system done? Have to check with Carlet's under two hundred.
Okay.
Out of fifteen fifty.
And at what time, when you get those done, let's say you get those done in the next sixty days.
Mm-hmm.
At what time after that, what's your plans on, are you gonna hit, are you gonna hit people up with a hundred dollar water bill?
There's been a whole bunch of discussion on that and there's gonna have to be a whole bunch more discussion on that as a group to decide how we're gonna do that. And, um, um, that's another meeting. But we, we've talked about it. Um, it's in the works and there's two or three. I don't like it, but I've talked with the accountants and, I mean, there's a certain way we have to do it. So...
Okay.
But anyway, we'll, we'll talk about that.
All right.
Okay. Uh, twenty-three, I had no.
No.
Okay, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, I had nothing. Um, next thing I had, I don't know if, if you have something to stop me. I get clean over to page, or, um, yeah, page thirty on the sewer before I have anything.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine is just, they're just talking. You know, I mean, that just explains why the sewer is like, what'd you have on thirty?
Oh, I didn't. I, I had it high, let me see here. Eh, did two Hs. Landowner pays all repairs from the main.
What were it?
The connection on the main, H.
H, okay.
And this says applicant for wastewater service shall pay all costs and expense and, uh, incidental to installation and connection to the building sewer and maintenance thereof from the point of connection to the public sewer, village premises of the applicant. The owner of the per, or portion installing the building sewer for said owner shall identify the village from lawsuit. Why do I have that marked? 'Cause it says applicant of wastewater service shall pay all costs. And I had, I think we need to put, change that up just a little bit, just so that it states, "Landowners pay all repairs from the tap on the main to the building." I think it needs to spell out a little bit. Because see, our water, we pay repairs for the water line from the tap to the stop box. And then the stop box, the stop box and leaks from there up is the homeowner, whereas the sewer is from the tap in is the homeowner.
Right.
And I think it needs to spell out, "Landowner pays repairs." I think it basically does, but I think it needs to be dummy-fied, sorry.
Sure.
It needs to be a little more simple, you know, like and white.
Absolutely.
That way there's no-
Dumb it down.
Yes.
For me included.
Kiss, keep it simple still.
Yes, absolutely.
I think we also need to realize that there's, before we got into this, the wild, wild west out here.
Yes.
You've got one line going in, splitting off, especially this happened right over here on South Main.
Right, did it, and Pedlers.
Yeah.
So are we talking about two separate things here? Because H is wastewater.
Yeah, we're on sewer. No, we're on sewer now.
Right.
Right.
Okay, but water itself-
So you're talking about stop box? That's not-
No, no, no. I, I know, I said, I, I said, you, you didn't hear it all. What I, what I was saying was, it's different than the stop boxes. With sewer, from the tap on the main end, it's yours to repair.
Yeah.
On water, it's ours from the tap to the stop box and then from the stop box in is the homeowner. I was just clarifying the difference between the water and sewer.
Okay. I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory here. It's, and the applicant's all the way.
You're, you wanna have one every now and then, and this happened, and the guy that was part Indian over here.
Oh, boy, did it.
The, you didn't have stop box.
And that was one that it was split.
On main?
Yeah, it's split off.
Kentir?
Kenthire.
Yeah, Kentir was my neighbor.
And it's split off. His service line come in, went to your house and your house, and it was leaking, but it was leaking on his side. And he had a fit that the neighbor had to help pay for it. Well, when it was all said and done, we made them disconnect it and re-tap and-
And you think you've got expenses, you gonna dig up South Main?
State right away.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it was ugly.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, I had nothing on thirty-one or thirty-two.
Okay.
I had this here, but I don't see anything marked up. I didn't, so I don't-
Thirty-three?
Yeah. I don't have anything on there to you.
No, 'cause you could talk about wide branches and deep branches and what you can and cannot do.
Right, on hookups.
And again, this all has to be approved by state-
Plumbing.
Plumbing. I don't think what the hell I'm gonna say, but, and anytime we have something like that, they come in and look at it anyway.
Sure they do. Yep. Um, I tell you what I wanna do, unless you have something between, I don't have anything now again until I get all the way over here to, um, forty-six. I don't know if you guys, if anybody else has read this or not. I know you did. So I mean, if you, okay, forty-six here. This application for sewer permits needs to be, the whole page needs to be gone because we don't charge for, uh, plumbing permits anymore. So that you guys understand, used to, if you come in, you're just gonna build a house or an addition. You paid so much per square foot. You paid so much per, uh, stool, so much for fixture. It was like a dollar, two dollars, three dollars. So you could have a three hundred thousand dollar house and your plumbing permit may have been thirty-five dollars-
Right.
On the plumbing end. So the state come through and said, "Okay, you're gonna have to start inspecting your plumbing." But we don't have a plumbing inspector. So they said the way around that is, don't charge for the plumbing. Because if you charge, then you have to inspect it. Well, we'd collect thirty-five dollars and, and, and call Steve Matthews and he charges seventy-five dollars to go inspect it. We was going in the hole.
Right.
So they said the way around that is, don't charge them and then we, being the state plumbing inspector, we have to come inspect it, not you. So that needs to be out.
Yeah, but it also gets us out of liability then, 'cause we don't charge them.
Yeah.
That's right.
Not responsible.
And as you, as a homeowner, if you're building, it's up to you to call the state plumbing inspector and say, "I'm building." At what point do you wanna come inspect it? And if you don't, that's on you, not us. So this whole thing needs to be out. And really, the private sewage dis- disposal application does too, because private sewage, that would be septic and we, that's the health department. So actually forty-six and forty-seven, both need to be out.
Okay.
And actually, you really could, over here on forty-eight, two commercial institutional governmental insti-, uh, industrial sewer connection application. Because whether it's commercial or a homeowner, the, all's they have to do is pay the tap fee to tap onto our system. And they go from there. So I mean, really, it's not a separate, it's not a separate, you know, unless you wanna leave it in there. I don't see a reason to. Because they-
Myself, I don't think we ought to put it in there. If you don't have it in there, you can't get it.
That's right. That's right. And, and what I mean is if they're gonna go, if you go build a house, you gotta pay a hundred dollar tap fee.
Right.
And if you're gonna build a business, you gotta pay the hundred dollar tap fee. There's no difference in between them. So really, that, that didn't need to be in there.
And the tap fee really doesn't cover anything but the cost of replacing the street. You know what I'm saying? You had to dig a hole in the middle of the street so it-
Right.
It, it pays us back somewhat to fix the damn street.
You have, it's two hundred and fifty dollars to permit to open the street up and it's a hundred dollars to tap, so that's three hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
Then you have to bring it back up with sand and gravel and then once it settles, we'll go back for that price and we put asphalt back on it.
Is that what you did up here on Vandelia? Yeah.
Yep, sure is. Um, forty-nine needs to stay in there, but I need to check, I need to check our contract with the ci- city with the sewer contract and make sure that their numbers of the BODs and TSSs and all that haven't changed. If it has, we need to change this to what our current contract is.
Do we, have we paid any penalties for having a larger-
Never. Never, the, the time I've been there, we never have.
Okay.
No. Because we don't have any industry, uh, industrial out here that puts high youth, high doses of BODs and, um-
There's a whole bunch of stuff.
Yeah, but I wanna make sure though, for this is in concrete, that this is still up with what our current contract is. So I'll check in that. I'll make sure that the numbers are right.
Well, would that work as another section that just says like, "Refer to in our governmental contract?"
And we could.
For rates and then-
That's a good way.
Then you wouldn't have to do it again.
That, that would be, yeah, kinda like the others. We said, "We're the latest." That, that would probably be a good way to do it, so...
Another question from one of them.
No.
Uh, say somebody has a, a serious water sewer issue and you correct it and they're, they don't pay it. So does the village get to put a lien on the property or shut their service off or how do you?
You mean like their water room?
Well, I mean, just like, you know, you have to dig up to replace a water line or-
Well, we don't, if it's not on us, you have to, you have to contract it out. We don't even do it. We won't even fix it for you. If it's ours, like I was saying, from the main to the stop box on the water is ours to fix. Um, if it's leaking in the yard, it's on you. But we won't let you go too long because that's before the meter and we're still eating the water. Um, and we haven't so much the time to do it and we'll come in and fix it. Charlie, we never have to do that. Um, but as far as somebody saying, "Well, I can't fix it. Will you fix it?" We won't do it. And we won't even do it, Charlie. We've, 'cause we're not in plumbing.
Dick, we got a lot to go through. If there's questions from the floor, have him write them down. He can come in and talk to John. We got enough to go through.
Yep.
We really do.
Do I?
I said we need to continue with this meeting. If, if the gentleman on the floor wants to talk to you later, that's fine. But we got business we gotta do.
Fifty, page fifty hundred rates on there.
Yeah, and that needs to come out, 'cause now this is sewer, talking sewer rates, I think.
So you want that chart out too?
Yeah. And there again, we can put something on there. This shall be hereby established rates and charges for services built by the wastewater treatment system of the village of South Jacksonville. Um, there again, instead of as follows, it can say, in accordance with the, um, the, the current rate structure, something that effect.
Yeah.
'Cause it says, "Treatment system of the village as follows." Well, we could put, uh, wastewater treatment system of the village of current, of the current rates.
I don't have anything on fifty-two, do you?
Nope.
Fills and weeds?
Nope.
Um, water drinker does a lot of that.
You didn't wanna take that BOD rate out?
Yeah, I think we're gonna do like, I think, um, Greg had a good, a good thing there. Like I said, just put, you know, as of our current, uh, city contract. That way if it changes on us on that end, then ours changes on that end.
I'm sure that's gonna change.
Well, not for quite a while, 'cause we just got a new contract here just before Gordon left, so...
Yeah.
And that's like a crap I can't, like, fifteen or twenty-year contracts. But, but eventually it will. So... That's all I had, Dick, from that all the way to, to, uh, the next, to page fifty-six. I didn't have anything else.
Okay, on fifty-four point twenty-three, which is revenues, I got the water work treatment. They're talking about our water work, wastewater treatment. We don't have.
We don't have. All revenues and monies divided by-
From the operation of the wastewater treatment system.
Yeah, but, but revenues and monies, I think, is still our sewer that we charge.
Okay, so we, we need to define that a little bit for somebody else. I don't give anybody idea that we have.
Treat it, right, right.
Wastepart. And, didn't have anything there. I'm on my page fifty-four, no problem. And that done, you have, you're out.
Yep. Before I leave here, a couple of quick things I wanna talk about real quick, just, um... To be thinking about.
Hey, before you move on, uh, I just noticed something as we were flipping by on page fifty. It's talking about the minimum monthly rate increases that was, you know, stepped up over a three-year period.
Yeah.
We don't really need that in there, 'cause it's already at that, like, we don't need the thing defining the stair step.
No.
Because we're at the top.
No, I missed that. You're right.
So it's that and like the last line of the previous page.
Yeah, that was, then I forgot that that was done just as we did that. So, yeah, that's over with eighteen, or eighteen, uh, January eighteen was it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
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 Now you're saying.
Okay. Um, just a heads up, we've got a, a, uh, high surface pump that went down at the water plant and it is in, um... I took it over to P Hori today to get it rebuilt, the pump. So we're down to one pump. And, um, it's not budgeted for, but I have the money in my budget. So I'm just giving you a heads up. It could be five or six thousand dollar repair. Um, it's gotta be done. We don't have a choice. We've got the money. It's just, there's not a line item for it.
Have you talked to Tiffany about that?
Yeah, and I've have. I mean, I'm-
So she's okay?
Oh, yeah, 'cause I'm still over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the good left in my budget.
Here in town or is this?
Down at the water plant, yep. So just, there again, I just want you guys to know about it. And then the softener plant. Um, we've been down to two softeners and, um... We don't even have them now because the motherboard went down. The, the brains of it, it's fifteen years old. It's obsolete at this point. Um, Tonka is who does that. They're out of Pennsylvania. There's nobody else around that works on that system. Seventy-eight hundred dollars to get them here, just to get them here. Um, that gives you three days labor, twenty-four hours. It's three eight-hour days, the we here, two guys. Um, the part and them getting here is nineteen thousand dollars. We don't have a choice. There again, I have the money in my budget, not the line item for that, but I have the money in my budget. So, um, you guys need to, you know-
What's the total?
Well, uh, providing that that's all the- Well, uh, providing that that's all the problems are, there's, they don't find anything else while they're here, that they gotta get parts shipped here, we're looking at nineteen four, nineteen four four three.
Okay.
Um, my guess is that's gonna probably go up to about twenty-four, twenty-five, cause I know there'll be valves and this and that probably too. But there again, I have it in the budget, just it wasn't line item for that.
Can that system be replaced with any other system?
No, because all the valves are automatic on all the softeners and it's all run off this system. My guess is even if we went to a different one, you're talking the same kind of money, because, I mean, it's all, you know, electronics and, actually it'd be more, because then you'd have to replace all the valves and all the actuators to match up with the new system, whereas these are still good, you know.
So are you telling us this now because you want it to be an action item and the-
Absolutely, because we gotta get rolling.
So this will show up, both of these will show up as action items? Okay.
You were working with Harry and Tiffany, so it does show up.
Oh, we have. They, but, they, they know about it, but I wanted you guys to be aware.
Sure, no, I appreciate that.
I didn't want you, you know, come up at the board meeting, well, I don't know what you're talking about, you know.
You know how I'd be voting.
Yeah, and you, you gotta know this thing, so-
Absolutely, I appreciate it.
Um, I mean, I've had, in all the years I've done this, I, the hits I've had on both systems this year is off the chart.
Tell me again, the pump price.
I don't know. They're gonna let me know Friday. He's, by tomorrow afternoon, he said he'd have it tore down and know what we're looking at. Um, so I'll have your price by the board meeting.
Okay. If you, um, get a chance, shoot me a text.
Absolutely.
That'd be great.
I should know tomorrow. He said he was hoping to have it tore down by tomorrow afternoon and give me a, an email me what we're looking at. Cause at this point, he doesn't know if he can rebuild it, if he has to put a new, you know, that's what they call a stack pump. They're about that tall and there's a series of pumps together, turbine pumps, so. There's just no way of knowing until you get into it. Um, so it was, uh, the seal was leaking on it. It was slowing down what it was pumping anyway. There's no sense in turning it apart, put a seal in it, and in six months have to replace the pump. If you're gonna have it out, you might as well rebuild it now, cause it was already slowing down its production. So now's the time to do it and be done with it. And it is not fun replacing it, so I really don't care to do it twice, so.
And you've talked to Tiffany about both?
Yes, and she, and we went over the numbers and, um-
That's all I need to know.
Yep.
She's the money person.
I think your mother-in-law's calling. She needs you to come and help her, so.
Before you run off, I got one other thing. This is something that's gonna come up under our business tonight and it won't be long or anything else, but explain to everybody here what you did for streets and water and sewer to the Sleep Inn or Sleep Easy or whatever the hell the, the new motel is out there as far as tiff. Didn't you finish off the cul-de-sac and wasn't tiff money used to, uh, run the water and sewer down to them?
No. What we did, Dick, was on the, on Sleep Inn was, we didn't do anything with the, um, with the cul-de-sac. What we did was, they had no sewer.
Okay.
Okay. Um, the elevation wouldn't work, so what we did, we tapped off of Magnolia and brought it east to about, a little bit halfway past where their building is, twofold. That allowed them to hook up.
Right.
But now it's there for the, um, the development of that property, which we would've had to run sewer up there anyway for any future development.
Okay, that's, that's-
So, and, and out of that, yes, that was paid out of the tiff as, at the same time that we did, um, loves.
In for the sole benefit of?
Of Sleep Inn. No.
Sleepy, what is it?
Sleep Inn, sleep. No, it was not. They had to have it, but this is, we didn't put that kind of money in just for one place.
But you put it in for the future development of all the ground.
North lot.
North of Sleepy.
Yes, yes. Yep.
I just want everybody to remember that, cause we're gonna go into that a little bit.
I got you. I got you.
No problem.
Okay. So, I, um, I will get you all a price on the pump for the, uh, water plant as I get it.
Yep.
Okay?
I've got one.
But that way, when it's on the agenda for, uh, the March meeting, you will know what it is.
Good.
We will have talked about it for those that are here. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Yep.
See you guys. Shut up.
See you in the morning.
All right.
Okay, here comes the police chief.
The police.
This'll be chapter seventy, right?
Uh, so it actually starts on chapter thirty-two. Uh, yes, sir. You're right, it is back there, but just very briefly, uh, in the front of this, uh, the ordinance actually start with the, the police department, the fire department, so on and so forth. And there's just very minor, uh, very minor changes there. So it'd be thirty-two, uh, fifteen, uh, actually thirty-two sixteen, police training. Uh, in that paragraph, uh, there's a conflict between this and the next page. In that paragraph, it says, uh, probation period of six months. On the, on the next page is our true probationary period of twelve months. Uh, so that page thirty-three just needs to be changed to six months.
We made a note of that a long time ago.
Six months to one year, all right. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then number ten, I don't know if we, did we get that one changed also as far as the-
Thirty-two ten?
Um, it's on page thirty-four.
Oh, that.
Thirty-two seventeen, ten, full-time officers must reside within the village.
Yeah, I've got a note for that being thirty minutes out.
Within six months and-
Thirty minutes out.
Should be thirty minutes out.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. So we've already gone through this.
Yeah, cause we started in the very beginning before we decided to split them up to departments.
Uh, so I'll be honest and say that the police, it's a little tough, especially with, uh, and you guys will love Bree, the new code enforcement officer. She's, she comes with a pretty strong bite. She came from McDonough County where she got a lot of training. Where, where actually, our requirements are a little stiffer with her. Not because she's a female, just because this is the way with shifting her to the police department that we felt it should be. It's not a safe job sometimes when you go out in a residence and, and they're not wanting to see you there. So she's in the process of field training. She's going through the ordinance and trying to get a handle on, on the ordinance themselves, but then she's also in field training as far as using a radio. She was issued a ballistics vest. Uh, you know, we're not training her to be a combat person, but at the same time, we, we all, everybody wants her to be safe, so. Um, I, in the future, I'd like to have her in on a lot of this, because the police is a little tougher with, with the fact that she's in our department now. I can tell you tonight about the police stuff, but there's a lot of code stuff in there. That you guys are gonna wanna work with her on, and you probably won't wanna have me here. Uh, anyway, the first section for me is chapter thirty-four. It's town policies. It doesn't fall under the police whatsoever. However, uh, this would be the section. Chapter thirty-four, town policies.
Oh, you're still not there.
Yeah, so, and I won't spend any time on this, guys. I just wanted to point out that this is where we had requested that the council, um, we, we, we'd like to sit down with at least the public safety, uh, uh, committee and, and truly spend some time on this landlord ordinance. I, I know we've talked about it briefly before. But I, I, I wanna make for sure that all of our council fully understands how important it is to draft one of the best ordinances that we could possibly have in this entire book in reference to landlords. I can show you statistics on our police calls and where they're ending up. You folks, Dick, I know you stepped in and, and helped us with mattresses and so on, which is obviously a concern also. Uh, we, we need to do something to address, uh, the people that are renting their properties. And, and we've pulled, I'll forward all those to you. We've pulled several different, um, not a fan of Chicago, but they actually have an excellent uh, ordinance in relation to landlord tenants that keeps the, the tenants safe. It keeps, it sets, you know, temperatures. You, you, you have to have heat and water and so on. I'll forward those to you folks. And again, I'm not gonna spend any time on it, but this is the section, just so everybody's aware of the town policies. Uh, this is the section that is-
There may be, you know, that last thing we adopted that, whatever the hell it was?
Mm-hmm.
There may be something in, not in that, but there may be something out there specifically for landlords.
That would be great.
And, and I'll take a look and see if I find-
Were you gonna reach out? Were you or were I, was I just gonna reach out to Lori Quigg?
You said you'd reach out and make first contact and then we'd kinda-
And I could just share that with her, cause what kind of feedback are you wanting? Cause now they're owning, they're buying up more and more property.
So I think it's, it's in our best interest and I think this council from the get-go, from, from bringing me in, has always said, hey, we wanna work together with our citizens. So to pass a, you know, an ordinance that makes it impossible for them to do business, uh, you know, wouldn't be advantageous for any of us. However, I, I mean, I think it's coming to that. If you, if you'll take the time to write with an officer, I think you'd make some ordinances right now that, that wouldn't allow, uh, and that's gonna hurt them. Uh, but they need to get in on, on the, uh, on the process of this, making this policy, cause, uh, our, our community's being ruined quite honestly.
Well, and, and I think for them, they're buying up some pretty big pieces and, but they're trying to improve them for the village. So I, and I do know Lori personally somewhat, I mean, she's my husband's boss, but she wants what's best. They don't live in the village, but she owns a business in-
Sure.
The village too. So I would think that would only help us as a community to work with the landlords. They're trying to make a profit. But we need to make sure they're renting to people that you're not constantly visiting.
The other thing that, that the council might consider is, beings that those are, are businesses, is, uh, we've talked in the past about a business license. It's not about the revenues or the income. It's about the documentation. Uh, the city's done it and had great success with it. Um, and that's something that, that helps regulate that also when you're talking landlords versus tenants is to, those landlords have to have some business.
We have some business license ordinances in here that could be interpreted differently.
Sure.
But they don't apply to landlords right now?
They don't specifically apply, but, but again, that's not tonight. This is, I look-
Right.
So you've seen the cities?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I actually had to.
Okay.
It's mandatory that you fill them out if you own a business in the city in the sense that-
Do you mind?
He's talking about a-
Yeah.
He's talking about a permit deal.
Yeah.
We have this, we have that legislation already.
But we don't follow through.
We don't follow through.
Yeah. It doesn't matter if you've got the legislation, if you don't follow through. It's just a piece of paper.
Right.
Yeah. Oh, I think that's an excellent point.
Okay, so getting into, to what you folks want me sitting here for, uh, chapter seventy, page three. It'll be seven zero point zero one C. B and C actually. Uh, it's, it's my suggestion to the council to remove, uh, seventy altogether. Order of the vehicle tax and licensing fee. Uh, it's nothing that, I've been here eighteen years. I've never-
It's something they came about in the fifties and one of those was a personal property tax. If you had a vehicle, they charged you X amount of dollars and-
Every year.
Every year. And that was one way of raising revenue. They did away with it in the fifties, sixties, something.
Don't get me wrong. I, I want every, I did raise revenue, but, um-
Yeah, but I, I wrote down here, delete all of seventy point one, point two. Because seventy point two is a different deal, but that's traffic signal maintenance provisions. You ain't nothing to do with the damn thing either.
No, sure. No, that's exactly right.
So, I mean, that, I think we ought to delete seventy point two, two.
I agree.
Also.
And, and this kinda falls, Dick, into the same thing you were talking to, uh, Johnny about. If we're not involved in it, then our liability is not involved in it. Uh, you know, if we, if we take that on, then we're on the hook for, when the power goes out and maybe then somebody collides and kills them or-
Well, then I guess seventy-nine-nine, are you talking just all of seventy, right?
All of seventy.
Seventy-nine-nine doesn't make sense to keep, right?
No, no.
Yeah, anything to do with seventy.
Yeah.
Cause all the guys, it's fifty years old.
Yeah. So the next one is seventy-one. It deals with golf carts. I'm gonna leave that alone. I, I'm, I, I can tell you that the police department's, uh, perfectly happy with that. Uh, we don't have issue. I know the council, uh, i- is a little disturbed that it's not exactly the same as Jacksonville's. Uh, however, I feel that ours is a little better just because of the regulation of time. Uh, essentially, the city's is the same. They just don't regulate any of their time. You can rent a golf cart at two or three AM. Uh, we would ask the council to leave ours, our time restrictions in there. Uh, and I, I realize that may-
And that's about the only thing that's different from ours versus theirs.
That's it.
You do have a reciprocity, do you not?
We do.
Okay, so.
I think that was our main concern when we were talking about the golf carts.
If you had one there, you could-
Way back when, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
But then that would still, the time, time limits would still affect someone from Jacksonville though, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, the fee we had talked about before and talked about the possibility of we're earning that to fifty dollars a year. The reason that came up is our stickers actually were two-year stickers. Uh, I think Tiffany presented that last, uh, meeting when I wasn't here. We did fix the stickers, so they're one-year stickers, so they matched the hundred-dollar fee. So, no issues there. Uh, traffic regulations, chapter seventy-two.
This is stuff that was passed back in nineteen sixty-five and they're talking about thirty mile an hour, eight, eight mile an hour going around a curve and, and all this crap.
Is it possible to take this, and, and I, I may wanna bite my tongue here, cause there is times where a state law is not applicable, applicable as it is with, uh, drugs right now, cannabis and, and, uh, uh, drug paraphernalia. But I'm wondering if we shouldn't reference the state law in this chapter instead of, cause there is certain things that go against our own speed restrictions. Uh, for example, number two says thirty miles an hour and we do have streets that are thirty-five. But also, there's other things that contradict, because the state law changes twice a year. I mean, they, you know, the politicians don't have a lot to do, so they, they change these laws multiple times a year. They change, they go into effect January one and July one of every year with new traffic updates. So to, to try to keep our ordinance updated, I don't know if it's possible to do what you're talking about, like with John, where you're just saying, you know, we, we have a buy.
With the state and all that, and that way we're uniform with them and they're uniform with us, because the last thing we wanna do is have thirty mile an hour to thirty-five on something.
And we'd be outdated when they've changed something, yeah.
Exactly. So, uh, that takes care of chapter seventy-three, if we can, if we can refer to the state.
Do you have a wording in mind for that that you'll share later?
Yes, ma'am, and I-
Okay, I got-
No, that's fine. I mean, we're not doing it down there.
Seventy-two point oh-three, have school crossings and intersections, and it says something in there, uh, do we have to have electric school crossing signs?
We're not required to. We do have kind of a comprehensive plan coming up that we'd like to show the council some, some of that stuff, but no, there's no law that says we have to have.
Well, there's an ordinance, so. You know, so, and, and I don't think that, that's a operative Zion over there, is it?
No.
You know, so I mean, we've been in violation of this ordinance, so it's something-
Yeah, we talked about this when we talked about Vandelia and that's one thing that, again, we'd like to sit down with the council.
Okay.
Um, and, and there's three major crossings, obviously, South Main at Dewey, Vandelia, uh, just east of West Street. And then also right in front of the school, right north of the school, that I, I think we can do a better job. We've applied through the police department for some grant funding. Uh, that would hopefully, and I've actually brought you some, some pictures to show of the type of flashing lights that can go up there, that I think-
I think it'd be good for us to have an update, since the school's new now and it's up and going. It'd be great to have an update.
Yep, agreed. Uh, parking of trucks.
Well, seventy-two oh-six is what I was in reference to, twenty mile an hour speed rem- limits, eight mile an hour around a corner. Um, you may wanna really address that and what that'll work. This is something that was passed almost a hundred years ago, nineteen twenty-seven.
Right, and that, and that's why I thought, Dick, if, if we referenced, uh, chapter seventy-two, if, if that simply referenced the Illinois vehicle code, uh-
Yeah. I was looking for something in that section about right-of-way for horses, or when, when I saw the date.
Yeah.
Um, or carriages or something.
There's one in there about horses.
Yeah.
Can't ride them on Sundays.
I thought it was just women couldn't ride them on Sundays.
Oh.
Probably. That's probably what it is.
I've been watching a lot of parks and rags.
And then I also had seventy-two point ninety-nine of penalties.
Yeah, that chapter, I think, can just refer solely to the Illinois vehicle code. The only one that's in there that I, I, I think maybe we should, uh, give a little attention to is the one that you brought up in reference to school crossings. Not necessarily to, to leave it the way it is and, and force the village, cause I, I mean, I don't, you have a better idea. We could be talking tens of thousands of dollars to abide by this ordinance and put flashing lights on either- We could be talking tens of thousands of dollars to abide by this ordinance and put flashing lights on either side of roadways and so on.
I just wanna be legal.
Right, and there's, you know, there's, according to the Illinois Vehicle Code, there's nothing illegal about what we're doing, it's our own code that makes it so.
That's what I'm saying.
The school district probably leaves that up to each individual school.
I would guess.
Cause we're actually a different municipality.
Agreement, if we have this, and they put this online. We've now set ourselves up, you know, and.
So, so was it Jacksonville's decision, decision then, like on, uh, Main at Independence, North Main? With the, that's Jacksonville's decision then, okay.
Well, because they also have Murrayville is another community that we have a school, and so they would have to decide on their own. But yeah, that's a really elaborate.
That's the way it's supposed to, moving forward, that's kinda the way they do things. When they come, if they ever come and redo South Main. That's what'll happen to that, and that.
Okay, well, and I, I guess I was thinking like, um.
Cross from Turner.
Uh, well, no, not, not that part.
They don't have anything there, do they?
They've got a, a speed radar sign that tells your speed.
Yeah, I see that.
And it's good going downhill too, just to remind you.
But they don't have a similar one to what you were referring to by.
Yeah, no, not like a, but that's like a, a pretty major crossing to Lincoln School also. But I guess I was thinking about out on Vandelia here, where we've got crosswalk to the school, um, out of, uh. Labor, Labor Drive. My, whatever, whatever it is. Like, I mean, I'm just, I'm, uh, didn't really read too much into that until we were talking about it. But with something like the, like solar powered LED flashing, just crosswalk signs, I mean, would that be covered in there, you think?
It would be. Yeah, I actually have a picture of exactly what you're talking about, and I have to tell you. We feel in the police department that that is the most dangerous crossing we have, not South Main, which is six lanes. But right here, cars park on both sides. And, uh.
It always has been.
Really, I.
Always has been.
For whatever reason, I don't have that one in my mind, but we've struggled, that's why we've put posted officers down there, tried to at two-thirty.
We always thought that was dangerous, and then when my kids were in school, cause I was on PTO then, and we always tried to get a crossing. Down here, parents park around the park, and kids run across the street, I mean, they just run to their parents' cars.
That's pretty much been taken care of with school policy, they, the teachers actually take them out of line, so yeah, that's much better, this one is terrifying.
We were never worried about Main, we lived on Main.
Isn't that crazy?
And they could cross the crosswalk with the light, so I never worried, because my kids walked across and came right up. But we worried here, I was more worried about it.
Makes sense.
Yeah, so what can, yeah, I, let's revisit that at a future time for what we can do as a board. We spent that much money on the school, let's make sure it's.
So, to, uh, to say that we wanna strike, uh, that the council wants to strike. Chapter seventy-two and replace it with something, uh, referencing the Illinois Vehicle Code. But I, I, I think you were just indicating, Paula, that, that it's probably best if we have something in our ordinance. That addresses the school crossing and intersections separately, or it, it would actually stay in that same section. As far as traffic regulations, uh, but it would have to be its own number, so not to remove that.
And when you're talking about liability, I'm thinking of, as a teacher, I think we should include the school district.
I agree.
Talk to the school district and then, in our ordinance, actually say, in accordance with district, school district one seventeen, and we're doing this. Because they have to have something in writing for Lincoln. My guess is the only reason they did that for Lincoln is cause that's the new school. Would you guess that?
Um, I drive that way every day to take my son.
Cause they don't have it in North, they don't have.
I, I, I think they, well, they put that in when they resurfaced Main. So I don't know if it had to do with Lincoln having been renovated, or if it was just resurfacing Main, cause they put in. The fancy, you know, light posts, and they did all that stuff down there. So I'm not.
I'd be interested, I just assumed it was cause it was a new school.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure what triggered it, but it kinda coincided.
I'd almost bet you there's a grant involved.
Oh, well, there could be, and maybe we could look at that.
Yeah, I bet you're right.
I just feel like we should mention in our ordinance, school district one seventeen, because this is not our school. This is school district one seventeen that happens to be in the village. And then I think liability, you're together, I don't know if that's legal, I'm just thinking you can join the two.
Yeah, it could certainly.
It's a school district, they're in our TIF district, you know, they, they sign off on that for us, so why can't we be joined?
I would reference them as the local school district, because you never know if something consolidates. So there's al- there's always talk about Illinois having so many government districts.
Yeah, you're right.
Morgan County's got like six school districts or ten school districts or something. And then other states have like a county school district, and.
So Dick, can we keep that in mind on that one?
I'll put it right there.
A toxic's pretty easy to. Deal with.
Okay, continuing on, you said something about trucks or something.
Yeah, so, this is one that we would ask the council to temporarily table, chapter seventy-three. We're trying to rewrite this entire thing, uh, we've met with Mr. Bob, the manager at, um. Loves, cause this is gonna affect them unless we, unless we go into this ordinance and simply cut out Magnolia Drive, Loves Drive, Comfort Drive. This is gonna affect them, so I met with, uh, Mr. Bob the other day and talked to him. I, I, I think this needs to be one of those things where it's more of a comprehensive sit-down, so that, uh, I don't know if you folks know it, but they. The IHOP is gone, there's a new taco place coming in, and.
IHOP's gone?
It's soon to be, it's there right now, but. They, Mrs. Love, the owner, uh, was in, uh, two and a half months ago. Uh, their tire shop is moving full speed ahead, and we're still trying to convince them to buy a lot across the street, unfortunately, they're pretty stuck on.
If, if you just take a second and look at page seventeen, chapter seventeen.
Set tire, but taco too.
You know, they're saying that you have the right to tell, take this guy somewhere and weigh the truck. You know, I, I fail to see what the purpose of that is.
Well, and it's up to you guys, but you've passed for, uh, certain streets, you've passed the weight restrictions. So, I think, that's the way I read that when I initially looked at it, is we do have the, 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 this ordinance gives us the authority to go. And pull across the scale just to, to do test, and I would ask that you leave something of weight in there, giving the police department authority. Cause I, I know we're looking at multiple violations, uh, from the drivers out at Loves. And officer, we're actually gonna send an officer to do truck training specifically, just to train him.
And they don't have the tire up and going yet, cause I knew that was part of it.
No, it's a.
Oh, wow, I thought it was done by now.
It's a huge, uh, several hundred thousand dollar project. It's cause our issue with it is, and it's none of our business, quite honestly, but our issue is, is it's gonna take out part of their, part of their parking. We average a hundred and two trucks per night on the, on their parking lot and our streets. Uh, so this is gonna take out a ton of their parking.
Which side is it on? I go by there every day to go to work.
A hopper RV, so it would be on the west side of there.
I just figured we had it, my husband was coming home from Chicago last night, and he said he had an issue with his work truck, pulled over to a Loves. And he said they were gonna fix it, and I said, we have that, so I thought we did.
I wish we did. It's, it's huge, it's absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, he said it is, um, so important to them, cause they have a work fleet of trucks, and he's like, we've gotta get them fixed right away and get to. The next job, and I'm not talking about a semi, it's just a, he has a pickup truck. So we don't know a date on that, for the trucks?
Uh, I, I, you know, I need to double check, but I'm sure that he told me the other day, in ninety days, they wish to start.
Ninety days, and then, um, the restaurant, you started that, but didn't finish.
Yeah, so it's, IHOP's gone, and it's a Taco John's?
It's tacos.
Didn't know.
It's one of the three choices, they were, they're all, they're all owned by Pepsi.
We needed McDonald's out there.
Well, that was the reason. McDonald's, one reason was. McDonald's Coke, not Pepsi. And Dunkelbel's Pepsi City.
So Taco John's is. Okay, that's good to know, thank you.
That's what I get.
Uh, same thing with, uh, are we still in seventy-three? Okay, so same thing, uh, as far as traffic code. Most of these, we can bring back to you. And in reference to the Illinois Vehicle Code, uh, that I think would, would ease the liability of the village. Uh, although there, there is certain things, you know, within this that we'll ask for, um, uh, still to have local control. Uh, for example, we, we have an ordinance in here that references, uh, drugs, we're gonna ask to keep that.
Okay, seventy-three, you have seventy-three point ninety-nine, does your, whatever code you just said, does that have a?
Penalty, uh, uh, fine.
Well, I mean, does it say it's gonna cost you fifty bucks or? Okay, so then we need to do away with seventy-three point ninety-nine?
Yeah, and again, I think, I, I don't think we need to do away, I think it needs to be in there, I think it just needs to. Yep, and that's the way with, with pretty much any of the traffic that's in here, I think we just need to reference what we're already using, so we're not using. Two sets of standards.
Absolutely.
Same thing with parking schedules now, the Illinois Vehicle Code doesn't really deal with parking unless you're on the, you know, South Main or whatever the case may be. So I think it's imperative that we keep this in there, uh, and, and it's not really out of line. Although, we've changed what's in here now, we've changed some of that with our requests.
You need to go all over this, and I'm expecting to do tonight, but, you know.
We need to bring this parking schedule ordinance to you, in, in what we feel that'll work, so you guys can.
Yeah, cause hell, I got no idea what we, where you can and can't park.
Yep, and that takes care.
We go with the traffic at our house, that's it. Cause when we don't, someone pulls up and says, can you move your car the other way?
Well, we're in violation already of our codes, ours, because of just the new traveling around the school. This is all set up to be one-way in this thing here, and that's too late, so I mean, we're all back to the.
Add that to your list of things to do.
Catching up slowly, but yeah. So, same thing, snow routes, uh, those are established and still good, we, we actually use this, this ordinance this street on two occasions, which is. Uh, traffic schedules.
That's the traffic direction I was talking about.
Yep, so obviously that for us, um, I, I would, I would totally do away with that and, and reference the Illinois Vehicle Code. Cause it's gonna tell you, lanes of travel, we don't have, uh, you know, uh, with taking the school out, it used to be one-way. We don't have that issue anymore. Our speed limits, obviously, this chapter is off, and we've already talked about replacing it with the Illinois Vehicle Code. Traffic control devices is what you talked about earlier. I'm sorry, page thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine?
Schedule five, traffic control devices.
Alright, yep, no sweat.
So, uh, they do reference the proper manual as far as the Illinois Vehicle Code going back to traffic control devices. However, a- again, I mean, you've already said it, there's, there's no reason to bring ourselves into the mix of this. When the state handles all of our stoplights, uh, certainly, we do our stop signs, but that's in a completely different, uh, section. Through streets.
Through streets, we have Michigan from southeast and South Clay. Now, I, I think that'll be rewired, reworded to be from South Main to Harden. Or how am I not reading this correctly?
No, I agree with you.
Okay, and then we have the same thing with Greenwood Avenue, be a through street from the intersection of the southeast and South Clay. That would make Greenwood.
Here's the problem with changing that, Dick, and I, I agree with you a hundred percent, I think it's, it's odd the way it's spelled out, I, I would almost recommend to remove it. However, if you wanna keep it in there, this, this goes back to this struggle that you had with the, uh, Illinois law. Deviates the truck routes through the mention of through streets. Uh, so, the only thing that I'd suggest there, cause I don't have an opinion or even any education on this. Uh, but I wanna be cautious that we're not opening ourselves back up, you just took care of that problem with semis. And they're designated through streets, so I, I would just, I, I don't know how to approach this, to be quite honest with you.
But it makes no mention of Vandelia either.
None whatsoever.
And I think it oughta be from Vandelia, at least from South Main.
To Harden?
East, yeah.
Yeah, I agree. And again, I, I'm not sure, I mean, I understand why it's under police, it's under traffic, but there, that has nothing to do with. So I'm just not sure how to handle that. Village lane usage thing, same way, I'm not sure that it's, you know, outside of, at some point, somebody. Decided they need to delegate that, what the actual use for village lane was. Weight limitations, you just redid this, it's, uh, solid. Same thing, traffic schedule, um, this deals with, uh, the golf cart, DHOB. Page forty-seven. And it's, it's dead on, that's one that's very current, that you guys just worked on in the last two or three years, so it's a current. I'm not gonna get into the, the code part as far as, um, you know, grass and that kinda stuff, but there is under chapter ninety, health and sanitation. Uh, there is a vehicle in needs section, but I feel, um. That is, that plays a, a part in what you already passed with your, you adopted the manual that you brought in. The problem with that is, I don't, and maybe, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't remember there being anything in reference to vehicles in that.
It's something in, there is something in there about.
Yeah, I thought there was.
Cause I don't have.
License and, and.
It had to be licensed, I think it said.
Also the, um. I don't wanna use the word safe, but that's not it, it, uh.
So would that just replace the, uh, ninety point zero one?
Supposedly that would. Unless we do something to supersede or overcome that.
That I just need to check in that new code, I don't, do you have a copy of that?
Cause I think that's how some people are getting away with it, right, is they actually keep tags current.
That's how she does it.
And so they say they don't.
Put a license on it. But this has got, this has got some teeth in it here, because, um, non-safe operating or unlicensed remains so-and-so. More than thirty days.
This one's a good one, we use this one.
I mean, it's, it's pretty tough.
Yep, I agree. And tha- and that's why I'm saying, I, I didn't know if what we passed, I'm sorry, what you folks passed. And then, under that new guidelines, contradicted this, which one should we be using, if there's vehicles in it? Uh, should we be writing under the ninety point zero one ordinance?
I would, since it's got more teeth.
Well, it's good.
This is pretty tough.
It really is, this is a good one.
And it's pretty explanatory, I mean, it's not, doesn't have a lot of wiggle room in it, you know, so.
Uh, so I jump forward at that point, because that's kinda the end of the police, that, that didn't involve police as far as health and sanitation. The only reason I brought it out was the unsafe motor vehicles. I don't think, you know, just.
Go on a little bit more.
Emissions and so on.
If you go to ninety point five and it's rubbish and highways, that's something there I think we oughta keep. It just, it just helps us. And it's not a great big deal, but it's paper, here's, the one thing I looked at, and it's paper, pasteboard boxes, glassware and all that, and it says wood. You can't dump wood, like a lot of people do, tree branches to me is wood. You know, in front of their house, expecting us to pick it up or whatever, nah, I, I don't know how you guys feel about this, but. We got the same damn thing right over here, what's the alley over there?
The village lane?
Yeah, village lane, right around Village Lane, that part. And the only thing they did was move it back.
I wish we had somewhere we could take our brush.
We do.
We do.
You have to pay for it, but you can take it to the city. Yeah, that's cheap, I mean, it's not expensive.
You, you can't all five dollars worth on a pickup truck, I mean, it's, you know, they, yeah.
Yeah, it's exactly.
You come to my house and see if that's true.
No, but this is something we need to be thinking about or looking at when we have a city cleanup. And John'll jump up and raise all kinds of hell, cause he, he just doesn't want any part to do this, but this is something that we can easily provide. To the village people, is that the word I wanna?
Is that a song?
The residents of the village, and it's not a big deal, it's a one-day, two-day deal. And load them trucks up and take them down there and, and we're done with it. You take it down there and they burn it, now that's the killer too, can't burn anything in the, in the city.
You can in the village.
But you can take it down there and they burn it all the time.
Twenty-four seven, there's a fire down there, that's right. Twenty-four seven, there's a fire down there, that's right. So, going back to your ninety point zero-five, um, this, this is, uh, this is actually dealing more with people throwing stuff out of a car.
Absolutely, you're absolutely correct.
So, a- again, i- if an officer was to come across that, they wouldn't write it on a village citation, just because of that, it involves our attorney and so on. It's called, uh, depositing injurious materials on the roadway, and it's a state law, so we, we would just write the state law. It's the littering law, but not dumbed down.
Right.
God, we get so much of that on dining.
Yeah, people.
My people throw stuff out in our yard.
Yeah, and it's probably my number one pet peeve.
I pulled out today and I saw a beer can, I'm like, are you kidding me?
Beer can lighter.
Yeah, and that was just overnight, somebody threw a beer can.
And this, this is just for us guys here, so to speak, but the penalty, if you read this penalty thing, hell, they got it down to five dollars, no less than five or more than a hundred, but if you overhear, it has passed in nineteen twelve, nineteen twenty-four, nineteen fifty-five, you know, so what I'm suggesting there is put a hundred dollar minimum on that. Hundred dollar, and I mean, that's, well, that's too much. I, you know, there is.
There isn't too much when it comes to littering. And I think you could, that's one of those things, Dick, where I think it would be in our best interest to leave it in there, cause it gives us the option to write it on a local ordinance.
Yep.
And, to be quite honest with you, if we, if that's a hundred dollar fine and we write it on a local ordinance, we get a hundred dollars. If we write on a state citation, it's, uh, fifty-seven dollars and we end up getting twelve dollars, and it's all settled down, so. Uh, that's, it goes into fire from there, trash and garbage. Uh, again, I, I went through a lot of these just for the code side of it, uh, but I think it'd probably be in our all best interest to, uh, let the code person come in, let Bree come in, and she's currently going through these now and highlighting and changing stuff that are, noting things that she thinks should be cleaned up, so rather than me waste your time, I think you could be.
I got no problem, and I think the fire chief oughta be.
Yeah.
Involved on the next one, on the fire regulations, if I want stuff.
That's why you're the department heads.
Well, I think our last meeting, Harry asked him to do that.
The fire chief?
Yeah.
Yeah, he did, he's, I know that he's currently going through the ordinances, he just wasn't on the, the agenda for tonight.
No.
Uh, so, uh, the only other thing that I have, and, and please feel free to ask whatever questions, uh, the very last thing, uh, and again, I'll, I'll supply samples if it's acceptable with you folks. I do wish that we would, uh, consider a taxi ordinance, uh, not necessarily taxi, but public transportation ordinance, um.
Like Uber too?
Sure, just public transportation in, in general, uh, that would address. Um, the city has it now, they, they're not the greatest at enforcing it. Uh, for example, the city has, the, the city has a great ordinance that requires the vehicles be, uh, should, uh, safety lane or s- some kind of a safety check. Um, they just allow the owner of the company to do it themselves, rather than having an outside, you know, an old tire and battery or an outside agency do it, which I think that's the downfall. Uh, there's taxis that come into the village fifty-plus times a day, uh, that you can see, you know, people's feet hanging under the cars and so on, so I, it'd be nice to, and I've talked with uh, city council members for Jacksonville, and they were very enthusiastic about changing their ordinance, and then uh, the person leading that, uh, resigned, she moved out of the city, so, um, Marcy was gonna take.
Marcy, yeah.
She was gonna take that on and, and ended up leaving as we were kinda hammering out some details, and I don't know what other interest they have up there, since our, our stop sign deal, I kinda have a chat about that, so. And again, I'll, I'll, I'll make for sure I forward to everybody, uh, hopefully in your next packet, a copy of a, just a general taxi ordinance, landlord ordinance, business license, uh, for the city's business license.
Do we have a lot of taxis coming through?
Uh, so, there's five companies in the, in the city, or in the.
Are there really five?
They kinda come and go. Uh, currently, there's four or five, one may have just gone out, uh, but they come to the village twenty-five plus times a day.
Really? Okay.
Labor drive.
I would not have guessed that.
Uh, labor drive, they, they kinda, you know, there's just a lot of elderly there that take advantage of it, and then.
I see mass transit quite a bit.
Yeah, they're fantastic.
But I don't see taxis.
Yeah, mass transit actually is a joy to work with. They've, we've had, not issues, but a few concerns over the last couple of years, and it's one public call, and it's taken care of a hundred percent, so. Nothing else, I'll ask to be excused. Get out.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I do have one question, I got to the thing about riding, uh, or driving a beast of burden in any highway, and they have a speed limit of six miles per hour, and I'm just curious, in your entire laundry career, have you ever pointed a speed gun at a animal?
Sober? Just kidding. No idea, I'd not.
Horse can run thirty to thirty-five mile an hour.
Well, I know that, yeah, I'm, I'm, it's just one of those things, like, the ordinance was passed, it was ordinance twelve, passed unknown date, so probably nineteen eleven, um, and it just struck me as funny, they put a six mile an hour speed limit on animals.
That'd be a trot.
Yeah.
It's not a gallop, it's not a full gallop.
Thank you.
No, that would be a worm.
Okay, alright, okay.
Okay, um, can we just do old business, new business, and then go in the call session?
I don't mind skipping.
Alright, old business, we had a request from the guy that runs Sleepy's, and if you remember what John just said, yeah. And this description here I handed out is eligible project cost, whatever. And these are things that, and Tiff and I really got into this, and it wasn't, it, we agreed not to do, to agree.
Oh, you mean you disagreed?
Yes.
Okay.
And I was using the word that this guy is entitled to this. There, there was some big problems with this guy, and I'm giving you a little history about it, and, um.
Who are you talking about, this guy?
This guy being Patel that owns.
Yeah, Bishop Patel, got you.
And, and he was, he was promised this and promised that, and he never got nothing. Now, and then he, he went over everybody's head, and he went right to the Tiff people in Chicago, or, um, Bloomington, Chicago, or wherever the hell it is. And this pissed a lot of people off again, you know, because he jumped over the heads. But he did this because he got jacked around.
My opinion.
He got jacked around.
My opinion too.
So, these things here that I've circled are things that he can qualify.
Okay.
And, and the word is not entitled, the word is eligible. He is eligible to, to get this. And under that being like number three, number one is cost of studies and, um, administration of redevelopment plan and you know, architecture, engineering, and all that stuff like that. Three is property assembly cost. The acquisition of land, real or personal, and or buildings, and so on, site preparation, there we are. Um, finance cost, up to thirty percent of the interest expense can be rebated back to him. And these are things that he can qualify, in my opinion. And I haven't done anything other than just get in the middle of this thing, but he can qualify to do this. Now, how Tiff works is, he currently is paying about ten thousand a year because the new building has not been put on. And the new building is probably gonna raise his taxes up fifty, sixty thousand. And out of that ten that he's currently paying, he, he will have a, a point there of of approximately forty to fifty thousand, that's going to be thrown into the Tiff. And what's money that we shall, we will receive, now, out of that, let's say fifty thousand, I'm just using the round number. Out of that fifty thousand, what's gonna happen there is that because they cut a deal in order to extend the Tiff to another ten, twelve, fifteen years, or whatever it is, then they had to give a certain amount of money out of that fifty grand to the school district because they wouldn't have gotten anything for, until the end of the Tiff, okay? So, let's say it's fifty grand, I don't know what it is, I'll find out, but let's say ten thousand, and so he's gonna have forty thousand dollars. And then, has been our determination in the past, that this guy is not entitled to, but he has, uh.
Eligible.
He's eligible for a refund of say four hundred thousand dollars, and again, I'm using round numbers, cause I don't know. Because this has to be approved by the Tiff people. And out of that four, four hundred thousand dollars, if you took ten years, if that's what was left, he would get back forty thousand dollars a year, but that's not the real, that's not really how Tiff works, because it's up to us to go in there and say, okay, we're gonna give this guy sixty percent back on this money he's eligible to get. So, if we give sixty thousand back, or sixty percent back of that, we're talking twenty-four thousand. Sixteen thousand would go back into our Tiff fund to fund somebody else to do something else with it. But he, this money's not going to be lost to us, other than it won't be available to us under the Tiff, but my opinion is, this guy's an.
Eligible.
Eligible, God, I wanna say that. He's eligible to receive this money, and that was the whole purpose, he came out here was to do this. Now, they, it's up to us, and, and we could say seventy, eighty, ninety percent, because they did approve one for ninety percent, for Bartlett, which is way too much, far as I'm concerned. But this is the deal cut way back when, you know, under the old administration, and old buddy buddies and all that crap like that. So, I'm, I'm just asking, you know, if, if you guys wanna continue on this, going through this and going to the Tiff people in Chicago, or, and Bloomington, to let this guy see what they say, what this guy is really eligible to receive back. It doesn't mean he may be eligible for four point three million dollars, but that doesn't mean he's gonna get it.
I think it would be fair to find out what he's actually eligible for.
We never let him.
Yeah.
Get to this point, and we, and it was never brought to us.
No, it never was.
Um, it was decided and not brought to the board, so why would we not give him the same opportunity we give other people?
And Tiffany has a real problem with this, because she, my opinion, if she's sitting there tonight, and I told her to cut.
Well, she has said it, yeah, she's said it.
You know, but she feels the guy lied to her. Well, you know what, she does a wonderful job, I think she's fine and, and all that, but she doesn't bode on this. She does not bode on this, and it's pretty easy, saying, well, you have to call Dick, or you have to call Paula, or you have to call you guys or something, just the, the blame is shuffled, you know?
Well, all I know, it was with an employee that's no longer here. And he did not let the board, uh, the board was not made privy of the conversations that he had, so I don't have a clue. I don't know what he told Bishop.
Yeah, ev- every story that I've heard about what he's told Bishop are all conflicting with each other, but I believe them all to be true. Like, that he just told him whatever would get him to go away, just jerking his chain for all that time, is what it sounds like.
Yeah. I think the guy's chain needed to be jerked at one time, but not, he, he, again, he's eligible.
Right.
I, I really feel is entitled to it, because it's his taxes, it didn't, it's nothing off us.
Yeah, well, I'm not gonna say entitled, I'll say he's eligible for it.
But it's nothing off us, I mean, we're not, we're not gonna lose one dime off.
Is this not what Tiff is for? Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely.
So, why are we stopping him, but we've let other people go further in the process?
Now, he's, he's, I, I've got the, I'll give you any documents I have on it, and rather than the same time than.
I feel that's why we have a Tiff attorney.
Yeah.
You know, you let the Tiff attorney.
Let him fight this thing out, go with it, and see what he rattles, you know, but.
We're not attorneys.
No.
Yeah, if, if an expert comes back and says, well, he's eligible for, you know, a very small amount, then, yeah.
But again, we do not have to refund.
Sure.
A hundred percent back.
But right now, we know nothing. We know nothing, so bring us the information that we actually can do something with, and that's when Tiff tells us what he's eligible for, then we get involved. Well, I mean, isn't that the way you see it?
Yeah, I, I can't make an informed decision if I don't have any information.
What he's eligible for, or if he's eligible for anything. I'm guessing he is, but I don't know. It's not my job, my job is to see what the Tiff attorneys say, and then when it comes before us, my job is to decide what I feel they should have, that's my opinion.
Okay, well, and some of the, like, the procedural stuff, that if they're like, well, if he had applied at this time, but then, you know, whatever, and it, but I've heard stories about him being told, well, no, you can't apply now, you should apply later, and then later, well, you should've applied before.
Right.
And.
We can't do anything about the past.
But you're on the right path on this, because, here's the thing, he's not, he's not eligible to get one dime back on this, because he hasn't paid any money yet. When he pays that first deal at fifty thousand, then, and I'm using a number.
Yeah.
Then it will be split up, that forty thousand is going to Tiff, and the other ten is there. And out of the forty thousand, then we can determine what we want, and we're under no obligation to give this guy anything, but I.
All I know is, I heard a lot of anger and like, personal thing, I don't care about personal feelings. If you don't like the guy, I could care less, I'm worried about Tiff.
Because this guy, anybody, if I was in this guy's position, and I got jacked around on this.
Yeah, that doesn't, that doesn't bode well for the village. We're gonna screw over one, potentially screw over one business, but we're going to bend over backwards for a few others in the same area, no.
Right.
I don't, I, that, that's, doesn't make sense to me.
Now, I'll tell you something too, now, at the end of this ten-year period, or whatever they, they, is left on the Tiff, let's say we got two hundred thousand dollars on our Tiff money, if we don't spend this money on something, we're gonna have to turn it back over to the county. And that's the last thing I wanna do, is, not, nothing against the county, but we set this up, we fought this, we've, we've done this. We've done our duties, and by God, the money oughta stay here, it was originated here on the.
How much work it was to get the extension.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, you can do the same thing with Tiff, if they wanna fight it, and do this under housing. If we wanna put in more housing out there across from, on Sequoia, somewhere like this, you know, but it's, you know, it, it, it's a lot of trouble, guys, it really is, but it, it'll work.
I, I think it's kind of a crazy idea for housing, because residential property tax goes to, I mean, the large part of it goes to schools.
This one, this one you own a school too, though.
Yeah, a portion of it, but I mean, um.
Sitting here with heat coat on, and I'm breathing.
I'm starting to shiver.
I don't remember, I, something that I had read about it, um, appeared to be less beneficial for school, like beneficial for us and growing the community, but less beneficial to the, uh, taxes for the school.
Deal with the school district in order to extend this out.
Right.
Cause the school district gets, I, I don't know what they get, it's a percentage.
Yeah. I, I know everywhere I've seen it, when I have seen the numbers, it's a, uh, when you look at the percentages of it, it's the largest chunk.
Oh, well, hell, it's over fifty percent.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll continue on with that deal. New business, nothing?
Oh, wait, back to old business, um, we had said at the last meeting, we were tabling the South Jacksonville ba- well, the bank, because South Jacksonville wanted to present to us about changing our funds, tourism fund, was like, when are we gonna talk about that?
I, I don't know.
Cause we said we were tabling it for further discussion, and it's not on here, so when are they presenting to us, do we know?
No, I, I, I said something to, to Tiffany the other day about this. And she said she was gonna get back to him, so would be my recommendation that we potentially have another meeting before our regular meeting next Thursday.
Yeah, I didn't know if we were gonna wait a whole nother month, or we're gonna talk about it.
You know, the other night, I, I wanted to be very nice when the Boy Scouts were in here, um, but I kinda felt like, it's my understanding that area banks were given the opportunity to present something.
I don't think they were.
That's what I need, it was my understanding too, but then I talked to Barbara Davenport afterwards, and she said, Paula, we didn't know. And so, I need, I want to hear clarification from Tiffany, that's. And so I need, I want to hear clarification from Tiffany, that's why I was hoping she'd be here. I wanna know, did they send things out? Was it a letter or was it an email?
Interpretation from Tiffany was that, which bank is it, Prairie Sun or, um. Who brought us the first deal?
The Prairie.
John Brown's bank, um.
Well, they, they approached us.
Pete, what was it, Pete's?
It's the money we have the Tiff for.
Right.
And they approached us, you know, by getting this other money, but nothing was sent out to the other banks by raising this up.
Yeah, it's on this, the last action item.
And.
Yeah, Prairie State Bank.
We currently have like a point two or something, and they wanna go to two point. I mean, it's, uh, percentages, that, that don't mean nothing.
But we were told that everyone was contacted, and I, I mean. That's my understanding, that Tiffany was handing them out to us and said, we asked all the banks, cause I, I don't know if you even asked, somebody asked. And she said, everyone's been contacted and this is all we got.
No.
But then Barb said, I heard about it on the radio, I'm talking about your meeting, and that's how I knew, so we hurried up and gave you a.
Now, I don't, I don't think that's the case, cause the way it was explained to me from Tiffany was that. She was approached by Prairie Bank, whatever it is.
Prairie State Bank.
Prairie State Bank, and this guy is the one that initiated this.
That's not how I remember it, but.
Yeah, that's how I, that's not how I remember it in this room either. I, I don't know what might have been said anywhere else.
I thought we initiated it, and they're the only one, and then we all said, well, then fine, because it made sense. But I didn't wanna tell them no, because I wasn't certain, so I want clarification.
Right.
Because I feel like if they missed a deadline, then.
That's their problem.
That's their problem, we shouldn't, we should go with Prairie State Bank, but I didn't have a way to say I was a hundred percent sure. So I didn't mind tabling it, but I don't want it to go that long, that's why I wondered why we weren't talking about it tonight.
Let's, let's shoot for next Thursday.
Wait a minute, I, that's the one I can't do, that's why we did it this one, unless you don't hate me.
Next Thursday.
Why?
That's a board meeting.
No, it's the twenty eighth.
I'm, I'm sorry, you're right, you're absolutely correct.
Are we close?
No, uh-uh, we're not close. Well, then maybe we could do it before the board meeting.
That's what I'm saying, if we did it.
So that's two weeks.
Yeah, two weeks. And, and say what?
Yeah.
All the banks should be notified.
If they haven't been.
If they haven't.
I thought they were.
I thought they were, and the only reason they come in here was because one, and presented to us, and they thought maybe we were gonna take it, so that's why they come in last minute.
And I thought maybe they didn't hear, and, and if I was a hundred percent sure they had. Known about it and just dropped the ball, then I would've said, no, I don't wanna table it, but I wasn't a hundred percent sure.
I was thinking the exact same thing, um, cause that's, anytime I'm taking proposals at.
Yeah, if there's a deadline, I'm sorry, there's a deadline.
Past a deadline, or it is, you know, a sheet of paper where it needs to be a book, I'm just like.
Yeah.
Throw it in the trash, I don't, I don't need it, I'm not gonna waste my time on you. And that's kinda how I felt at the time, but exactly the same as you, I wasn't.
Even though Barb said she didn't know, she's not the president of the bank, or I don't know who got the letter, or if there even was a letter. That's why I want Tiffany to tell me, for that bank, we sent it to Kai Schnicker, and if they sent it to Kai, then that's on Kai.
Right.
If he dropped the ball. So, I would like you to ask who we need to follow up with on that. I don't want that to drag out another.
Nope, I think it ought to be, uh, decided at the next board meeting and be an action item.
So if we talked about it before, we can put it on there.
Oh, yeah.
And an old business, um, well, I guess it might be new business, cause you don't know about it. But it's something that has happened the past few years, Jacksonville, um, high school has asked for prom money, the after prom party. And originally, I believe it was two years ago, two or three years ago, they asked for it out of tourism, and we, the board at that time decided that was not a tourism expense. But I think Harry might have even given it out of his money last year, because we all decided that we have plenty of JHS students in the village. But it's Jeanette Barlow, who is the sponsor of the junior class, cause it's a junior prom, junior, senior prom. But she is supposed to send a letter, Tiffany said she sent one the past two years. Jeanette reached out to me, asked if she could send it to the same person, and I said, sure, and I just asked Tiffany, and she said she still hasn't gotten the letter. But that may be on, or we could talk about it, maybe it'll be on the agenda before, I think prom is when, May?
Something like that.
Okay, so I had said to Jeanette, the sooner you can get it in, because we only vote once a month, so Tiffany thought she would have the letter. But we're not gonna take any action without seeing a letter.
Right.
And I think last year Tiffany said they got five hundred dollars. So I just wanted to put that out there again, that they're gonna ask, and that affects many of our residents, so. Just, but we, again, they've gotta have a letter, or, but it wouldn't come out of tourism.
What's her name?
Right.
Jeanette Barlow.
Okay.
Yeah, it's Gary Barlow's wife, she's a basketball coach and PE teacher at JHS. But she's supposed to have it on their letterhead and, you know, all that official stuff.
Okay. Any new business? And are taking a motion to go in the closed session?
Go out of open?
Yeah, a motion to go out of open is what we need. And some.
Now we're being closed session.
I believe you have to do a roll call, right?
To go out of open?
Yeah, right.
And somebody put the heat on?
Put your coat on.
It's cold in here?
I'm gonna have to, yeah, I'm freezing. You got a short sleeve on.
My hands are sweating.
Are you kidding?
Yeah. Feel, I'm feeling damp at the brow. Yeah.
You're thick thin. I wonder if they have it on a timer.
I'm sure it is.
So maybe it shuts off when they're gone.
And I guarantee.
They turn it down, it's at sixty-four or two.
Well, I guarantee you, that's why in the, uh, contentious Gordon debates, where everyone was shoulder to shoulder, and there's.
Oh, it was hot.
Way too many people were in here, and it was ninety degrees in the room.
Dick Sample?
Because.
John Guttler?
Didn't turn the AC on.
Yes. Chris Norton?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Stacy Pinkerton.
CMB thing.
Mm-hmm.
The fact that they're not letting you deposit into the ATM. They did the same thing with PNC, the one ATM that's over at like Lincoln Square. It's just a boy, they want you to start doing mobile banking.
Well, and I, they said they would. Cause I, I think now they'll let you take a picture of it.
Right.
Yeah.
Eight oh eight PM.
We just discovered a few, what, like six weeks ago, the US Bank will do that.
Take a picture of it?
Yep, up there.
Are we going into closed session?
Yes, sir.
Give me a second.
Aren't we?
We, uh, when she's ready, yeah.
Thanks, Anthony. Take care.
Okay, motion.
Need a motion to go in the closed session.
Second.
Second, there we are. We're in closed session.